I'd like to call to order the September 25th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. I'll ask the Secretary to call the role, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cassali?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Oppone is absent. Mr. Lowry is absent. Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. I'm going to add one item under new business. Yeah, new business, I guess. The Macomb Township has notified us about a Meyer Express gas station, and we'll consider that.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Item here as well as everyone else. Could you please speak up? I'm sorry, Mr. Trump.
Okay, there's one item that we're going to add to the agenda, requesting we add to the agenda. It's regarding a Meyer Express gas station. With that one addition, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved to approve the revised agenda?
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from September 11th.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is correspondence from the City of Troy regarding their master plan. I'll ask the planner to offer comments.
Thank you, Chairman Moffett. The City of Troy is providing their draft master plan. We share a common boundary at the southwest corner of the township. The northeast corner of the township primarily contains the M-59 in the Quinter Road intersection. The Troy Draft Master Plan Future Land Use Map identifies this quadrant as recreation and open space and public and quasi-public space. The proposed land use designations would not have an adverse effect on Shelby Township and deem that the compatibility with the planning and zoning policies along our common boundaries are consistent with the township.
Okay, any questions for the planner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Snyder?
Moved to support the adoption of the City of Troy master plan?
Support.
Got moved by Snyder, supported by Baker. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Chair will yes. Next item is site plan number 23-32, Joe Youngblood for Shelby Parks and Rec. Julie, you doing this, or?
Nick.
Nick? Oh, I should read my notes.
I guess I'll introduce this request to the planning commission then. So this request is for a...
Would you like me to do it?
Whatever you'd like.
Much go ahead. Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll take it from here.
That's fine. And, you know, again, I don't appreciate smart comments either. So, and if you recognize, we're all volunteers on this board, too. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So, the township is proposing a kayak launch at Riverbends Park here around the Clinton River. It is across from Howland Ponds Park. It's located on a vacant parcel right now. Parcel number is 2307-20300-043. It's located on the east side of Ryan Road and it's south of 22 Mile Road. What the township is proposing is a kayak launch. We're doing a gravel general parking area with a paved handicap parking area, paved paths, and a stormwater management improvement plan for the area, which includes bioswales, which are good for the, you know, natural environment, helps kind of filter out some pollution before it gets to the Clinton River. The kayak launch in this area would be a permitted use as part of the general recreation uses that are allowed in that area, the rec zoning primarily. With that, there's a couple of things that I'll have to see on the site plan that we'll give over to the Novak and Faust who did the site plan itself. The first one is that bumper blocks are not permitted in the township, except where they're permitted or approved by the planning commission where the site necessitates it. With the proposed gravel parking lot, it may be useful to have the bumper blocks there to kind of create a curb so vehicles are not traveling onto the grass areas, since there's not a necessarily dedicated curb in that area. So that may warrant some discussion by the planning commission on whether or not those are appropriate there. Other than that, a tree permit will be required to make sure that the regulated trees that are removed are being appropriated or replaced. Work within the flood plain and wetland areas will require permitting through Eagle, and then we'll need to see a rendering of the proposed kayak launch. The building department also wanted me to note that the accessible route will require edge protection, handrails on the ramps, and code compliant stair geometry. With that, the planning commission can either vote to approve the site plan as proposed with the necessary revisions, or they can postpone it to see the revisions themselves at the next planning commission meeting.
Or we could deny it, too. It's also an option to this board, okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the unwilling petitioner? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve site plan number 23-32 for Joe Youngblood for Shelby Township Parks Recreation Maintenance, vacant parcel number 23-07-20-300-043, located south of 22 Mile Road on the east side of Ryan Road, proposal for a Riverbends Park kayak launch on the Clinton River. The approval is subject to the submission of final site plans addressing all department engineers and planning commission comments.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion?
One question for the motion maker. Now, we, there was a discussion about bumper blocks. Does that mean we approve the bumper blocks in the parking lot? Okay.
Support.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
And the chair will yes. Next item is conditional rezoning in site plan number 23-16, Giuseppe Vitale, Vitale Plaza. It is a public hearing, so I'll ask the secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following conditional rezoning and site plan. Applicant, Vitale Plaza LLC, Giuseppe Vitale 41820, Garfield Road, Clinton Township, Michigan 48038. Proposed zoning and use, conditional rezoning from R1C, one-family residential to C2 linear retail business, and site plan for a proposed warehouse facility. Location, 55274 Van Dyke Avenue, north of 25 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue. Conditional rezoning petition and site plan, number 23-16, Sidwell number 23-07-03-351-014. Legal description is as follows. The planning commission will meet on Monday, September 25th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in the Shelby Municipal Building Boardroom, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan 48316-5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning application and site plan. The application for the conditional rezoning and site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on September 6th, 2023. There were 170 property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on September 5th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. The format for this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will be allowed to come up, offer their reasons for the rezoning, and in this case, because it's also a site plan, a conditional, there's a conditional site plan along with it, will explain what they're proposing to do with that rezoned property. I'll then bring it to the board. The commissioners will ask any questions or offer comments on what's being requested. I'll then open it up to the public, and anyone's willing to come up, offer their comment, or raise questions you'd like addressed. I'll capture those questions, and then I bring the petitioner back up and have them answer the ones that seem appropriate. Again, the purpose of this, we will recommend, make a recommendation on this rezoning. Ultimately, the township board will make that decision, that determination. So the purpose is to get sort of both sides of, or all sides of the argument, and then we'll make a decision, you know, on what we recommend going forward. It's not a debate, not an argument. We're, it's more of a fact-finding thing, and so that is our purpose. So, with that being said, I'll ask the petitioner or representative to come up.
Evening, Borg. The property proposed here is to do some dry storage for our fruit market. It's for some overflow parking also. We get a lot of comments about our parking lot being very busy, so we have added a lot of parking in the back.
They get your name and address for the record, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Giuseppe Vitale, 1936 Tracy Key, Rochester Hills, Michigan, 48306.
Thank you.
And it's for dry storage, paper products, water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, catering supplies, a lot of our equipment that we have in our store, some products that come that we don't have the available space in the store will go in this building for dry storage, and basically going to utilize the overflow parking from our parking lot to use, to have a lot of Jason parking in the back, so.
Okay. Color of the building, so just for Vincent Jones?
Yes.
So no other tenants will have access or use it, or?
Correct.
Okay. Seem like a significant parking, so that employee or would also, I mean, how would, how would a patron utilize?
More employees for the holidays, you know, around Christmas time. We're really, really busy, so, you know, a lot of like holidays, we have employees park back there and kind of utilize that space for, you know, a lot of vendors that are coming in and...
No possibility to put a door in the back to allow folks access, sort of multiple?
No.
Okay, yeah, curious. But, and then screening's going to be, I think, questioned. I know the planner's going to talk about it, and I'm sure my other colleagues are all going to talk about it.
Okay.
More kind of to the north, because those buildings were there, the stuff to the subdivision proposed to the east maybe a little, and there's a, there's a drain there we get, and there's some existing vegetation, but there still needs to be, and I don't know if you've thought about that, or, I don't know.
Some screenage?
Yeah.
There is a creek on the, on the one side, yeah, so, what do you mean, like a berm or something, like?
Or some kind of planting, something to screen. You're putting, you're putting a 15,000 square foot warehouse behind somebody's house?
Yeah, exactly.
In, in an area that's supposed to have been C through, C, I'm sorry.
Correct.
R through, or C, all right, so R1C. So, it's supposed to be residential, and you're asking us to change it to something to allow for a warehouse?
Correct.
That changes kind of that thing, or that person didn't anticipate that that was going to be a warehouse, so there probably should be some kind of screening.
Okay.
All right. To the board, any questions? Okay. No, go ahead.
Is it the right time, or do you want Julie to speak first?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. In the engineer's comments, I'm concerned about the detention ponds that are there. Are those detention ponds sized to accommodate the rainwater from the development of the warehouse?
Yeah, you know, I took that into account. I don't have the answer for that. I would have to speak to my engineer and get back with him. I did, I did mention that to him, and whether it's size or not, I don't have that, that information tonight. You know, I'd have to see about my engineers and what he recommends.
Yep. Well, I think it's very important that we make sure we have the appropriate capacity.
Yeah, correct.
And speaking to our council earlier, was there a question, I'm going to actually call on Commissioner Cassali about the side, there was an agreement when those properties were combined years ago that a sidewalk was going to be completed on 25 Mile Road, and I don't believe that's been the case. Do you want to add to that, Commissioner Cassali?
Yes, on the, from the planning commission meetings and the site plan that was submitted back in, maybe Mr. Kirk can give me the year that that site plan?
2004.
In 2004, when the parcels were to be combined and appropriate seven-foot sidewalk along the whole frontage of 25 Mile Road, which hasn't been complete. So I am concerned with that, and maybe we need, it's time to do that along with this submission.
Going east on 25 Mile Road?
Yes, so your sidewalk ends at the second, in the middle of the second detention pond.
Correct.
And so we have to take that over to, over the drain, because that, your property, your other parcel is, contains the drain.
Okay.
So we haven't met the requirements back in the, I mean, this, this proposal had us do a little deep dive into what was happening with these three parcels and why they were never combined?
Correct.
Back in the day, so I think we should take into consideration doing that.
Okay, all right. I'll, yeah, like I said, I have to get to it with my engineer and take it from there.
So you get, as we consider a new request?
Yes.
For a dev, it's probably best that we make sure that the previous promises were, are completed?
Absolutely.
Or that our plan to get completed with that.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, so then AEW back in '04 required that those other parcels be combined, so now your two parcels to the east, which contain the ponds, are separate parcels, each standing on their own.
Correct.
They only serve as your parcel, so it makes sense to combine them with all of those in case?
Okay.
Something ever happened, and then get full site plan on that.
Got it, got it.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the only public hearing. The planning commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. The planning commission is a recommending body. The township board will take into considerations these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. At this time, anyone is free to offer any questions or comments on this request. Again, I need your, I would need your name and address, and then there's a, should be a sign-in sheet there if you could sign in on your way out. You can do it after, yeah.
Richard Barr, 55415 Ambassador Court, Shelby Township, 48316. Question. What's the access for this going to be, and what kind of traffic is expected? Is it going to be off 25 Mile? Is it going to be off Van Dyke? Is it going to be both? And are trucks going to be coming in and out? And is there any consideration to traffic issues that might cause?
Okay, I'll have him come up to answer the questions. Anyone else wish to comment? Any questions? Going once, twice? So everyone's caring about the Tim Hortons. Everyone's here for Tim Hortons, so. Okay. Why don't you come back up? Well, oh, Julie, why don't you do your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. So this is a little bit over four-acre site that is currently zoned R1C, and it was, they're asking a rezoning to C2. This would actually combine the parcel insofar as eliminating the split zoning on this piece of property. Now, there is a few items on the site plan that were deficient. As you mentioned, the landscape screening, and also the facade of this building itself. Now, while I understand it's behind the shopping center, it may not be very visible, but we require that the facade be some sort of decorative material. I'm not concerned, like I said, again, behind, you know, Van Dyke, you're not going to be able to see this building. However, if you're driving on 25 Mile in the winter months, when there's less foliage on the trees, you may be, it may be visible from that, from that perspective. The other issue is that plan, the site plan also noted that there's going to be an expansion of this building, so I would recommend that you come back for an expansion, if it's even feasible, because it is located in a flood zone area.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, like I said, the landscape screening, so it's up to the board, I guess, if you would like to approve it at this time, or leave it up to me to make sure that they meet the major one requirements as far as the screening on the north, and also on, along the east property line.
Okay, thank you. So, to the questions, you know, so whatever, truck access would just, would you be increasing traffic, increasing truck traffic?
No. No, it would be the same trucks that we'd be delivering there right now would be, and it's all contained inside the same, there's no egress or inlet. This is all contained in the parking lot, so it wouldn't be adding any more traffic. It would just be more, basically a couple more supplies.
Right, and access would be those, the sort of the roads that run both along east-west and north-south off of both Van Dyke and 25, and that's for the employees?
Yep.
Okay. And then in terms of, well, I guess it comes to us on, there will need to be some landscape screening.
Yeah.
And then in terms of working with the township, you did an excellent job. I mean, it's really a well, it's a nice complex. The architecture's nice. Each individual, you know, each unit has a little different architecture. It really is a nice complex, and it's been an addition, so we would hope that that would also be continued on.
Okay.
Because you never know what the impact's going to be, you know, so best to do it right the first time. Okay, so, thank you. To the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You guys sit on that, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so our decision this evening must be based on the following: the practicality of rezoning requests and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. At this point, we can recommend approval. We could disapprove, or table the request to evaluate the information further. We would just, whatever, whatever motions made, you know, if it could reflect whether we want to, well, either postpone to get, to have a landscape plan and a new elevation, or entrust the planning director to act on our behest. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I'm going to move to postpone conditional rezoning and site plan number 23-16 for Giuseppe Vitale, 55274 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 23-07-03-351-014, located north of 25 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue. Proposed warehouse and conditional rezoning from R1C, one-family residential, to C2 linear retail business. In order to give the applicant the opportunity to address the planning commission, department, and engineering comments raised tonight, including the screening to the east, issues with stormwater runoff to the retention pond to the south, and the sidewalk connection on 25 Mile Road.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion?
One second, Mr. Chairman.
You should address the parcel combinations, as a requirement was...
Oh, and the combination of the parcels, as discussed at the meeting this evening.
Would that also take care of the sidewalk issue? Do you want to address that? Combining will take care of it, or do we need to address it as part of this?
It was part of the prior approval?
The combination, okay, okay.
And then comply with the prior...
And then drill with that one, okay.
Support.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair will yes. Next item is conditional rezoning and site plan special land use request number 23-25, Revender Saney, Sai, S?
Saney.
Saney, okay, close enough the first time. ANSTH number seven, Real Estate LLC. Format for, well, actually, we need the secretary, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll ask the secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following conditional rezoning and site plan. Applicant, ANSTH, the seventh, Real Estate LLC, Revender Saney, 17600, 14 Mile Road, Fraser, Michigan, 48026. Proposed zoning and use, conditional rezoning from O1 professional office to C2 linear retail business, and site plan special land use for Tim Hortons with drive-through. Location, 46947, Shainer Road, southwest corner of 21 Mile Road and Shainer Road. Recondition, reconditioning rezoning petition and site plan, SLU 23-25, Sidwell number 23-07-35-227-022. Legal description is as follows. The planning commission will meet on Monday, September 25th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building Boardroom, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316-5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning application and site plan special land use. The application for the conditional rezoning and site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published, published in the Shelby Utica News on September 6th, 2023. There were 40 property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on September 5th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
We did. We did receive, just this evening, one piece of correspondence, and they live on Ledwin Street, Mr. and Mrs. Pollack, and they are against this building of the Tim Hortons rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Format would be very similar to what we just experienced with the previous request. The representative or petitioner representative will come up, state the reasons for the request, what they're requesting, because it's also a site plan. We'll then bring it to the board for the commissioners to ask any questions for their education. Then I'll open it up to the public, and again, for whatever comments people wish to make, or questions, I'll write them down, and then bring the petitioner back up ultimately to answer those questions. And then we'll, we'll weigh the information that we received this evening, and what we've researched, and make an educated decision. With that, name and address, and please introduce what you're requesting.
Underlord Chairman Moffett and Planning Commission Member, my name is Revender Saney, resident of 2004 Carrier Court, Shelby Township, 48316. And I've been living in the community since 2016, and we live and do businesses in this community. I'm here to support the proposed development of Tim Horton, new state-of-the-art 1,600 square feet development at the southwest corner of 21 Mile Road and Shainer Road. This development will benefit the township and the community in many ways. This development will create 15 to 20 full-time and part-time jobs, opportunities for the resident and youth, youth in our community, and new state-of-the-art 1,600 square foot footprint with modern drive-through restaurant will serve resident on the go, saving them time and effort. This restaurant will also have a seating to meet, meet the needs of the family and loved one living in the community. The proposed development will bring the Texas Avenue that do miracle in our communities. The proposed development would address the traffic concern by implementing the efficient drive-through lanes and traffic flow measures. We have, we have cameras inside the restaurant at the drive-through with the full visibility of the drive-through lanes, with the industry-leading timers to manage and oversee the drive-through times. We believe in being the best on the block by maintaining our properties with attractive landscaping and curb appeal. Example of that is the former site of Credit Union One, located at 51111. That is one of our development, right at the lot of Big Lots. So our business are active supporters of the local community initiatives such as Lion Club, Rotary Club, Leader Dog for Blind, local high school bands, and Township Open House, or the senior activities sponsored by Shelby Park and Recreation. Tim Horton Children Foundation, a signature charity, helps youth from disadvantaged families with full-paid leadership camps, and every restaurant sends the two youth from the community where we do business. We also work with the Utica Community Schools and Rochester Community Schools to train youth with a learning disability. Once they complete their high school curriculum, we offer them the chance to join our team. Presently, we have two of these team members that are 23 in Van Dyke locations. This restaurant will adhere to strict safety and security measures such as proper lighting, security, and pedestrian, pedestrian access. In closing, I'm seeking your support in favor of this development, and happy to answer any question, or that will take care of any technical questions for that.
Should I pop up on screen so everyone can see, or can you guys see it at all?
Not yet.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and fellow citizens. I'm Odette Georges, and I have my colleagues with me today, Danae DeSico and Mitesh Gandhi.
Yeah, why don't you, yeah, can you lean into the mic, bring it down a little bit and speak a little?
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. We're from Gateway Engineering, and we're the architecture team for this Tim Hortons. Located, our office is located at 8155 Ansberry Drive in Shelby Township. We'd like to thank you for your time and consideration in giving us the opportunity to present this Tim Hortons proposal. The purpose of this presentation is to seek a rezoning and a variance for our property located on 21 and Shaner. So the current zoning is O1, that is office, and we'd like to seek a rezoning for C1, commercial, with special use for the drive-through. The current land use for this corner lot property, it's currently vacant, and through a rezoning, we can develop a Tim Hortons coffee shop and drive-through. So because of Tim Horton's design guidelines and the property size, we are requesting four variances for the best possible site design. The first variance is a 15-foot variance for major screening setback on the southwest side of the boundary. So the required is 25 feet, and we're proposing 10 feet. The second variance we'd like to request is for a 15.41 feet variance for the trash receptacles, and the required is 25. We are proposing 4.59 feet. However, trash pickup is twice a week, and it is mainly cardboard and coffee grounds, and we will make sure to heavily landscape this area so that it's not an issue. The third variance that we are requesting is a facade material variance for the brick requirements, to use EPIS and aluminum siding per Tim Horton design guidelines. And finally, we have a landscaping variance request. So the trees required on site is 52 trees, and we are providing 20 trees just because of the tight buffer due to the shorter length of the setback. And that goes for the shrubs as well, the required is 69, and we are providing 55. So we mainly designed, we mainly designed the site according to this pre-approved precedent of the office that was pre-approved by the city. So using this precedent, you know, they have two entrances, whereas we have one, so we try to avoid any gridlock on our site. And also, you know, we kind of went off their setbacks, but after speaking and engaging with the community, we listened to their feedback, and we came up with an optional, a second option for the site. So this was not officially submitted, but we are in conversation with the community to try to design the best site for, you know, the greater good of everyone. So in this second option that we've revised, it includes no setback variances on the southwest boundary, however, we would need to.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
Are you introducing something we've not seen?
That is correct.
Well, okay, the reason for a public hearing is we notify, people come, there's a, you know, that's available, rendering that's available, they can take a look and comment, and now you're coming in like, and we haven't even looked, we haven't even had an opportunity to look at.
We can table this manner, we just, we would just like to present a second option.
Well, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in favor of a second option until we get through the first option. That's just my feeling.
No, that's fair. I mean, I, you know, I'm not going to comment something I haven't had a chance to take a look at, you know, that verbally you're going to tell me some things and I'm supposed to comment and give you feedback on. That's just not fair to myself or to my colleagues here on the board.
So Chairman Moffett.
I mean, and listen, I agree that probably a second option is going to be entirely necessary because given just you listed the four requirements. One, you're coming to this board to say, okay, it's on this, we don't want to zone this, we want something that's a more intense use. Yeah, we want a more intense use, and then we're also going to put a garbage dump, a garbage container four feet from someone, a residential homes, you know, and not offer screening, and the trees to be at 40% of what's required. Yeah, that, those, I mean, I can get why, I'm glad that you see that you probably needed to pivot off of that, but we're not going to do that on the fly, not here.
Fair enough, Chairman.
We, there is screening, just to be clear, there would be a six-foot fence wall screening.
Yeah, you were screening, you got 25, okay, so, yeah, so, right, you require 25, and you're going to give me 15, you're going to give the neighbors 15, and that's just, is not, has not been adequate, you know, especially in such a small fight.
Chairman Moffett would like to address those concerns in the new plan, but you haven't seen it, okay? So we will be submitting.
Okay.
And that was after we engaged with the community, the architect firm and myself, I had the opportunity to speak to one of the resident, and we asked, what are your major concern? And so based on that feedback, we, you know, updated these plans over the weekend. We will be submitting for the, you know, to the Planning Commission as well as the, you know.
All right. Since we're all in kind of an agreement that we're tabling this at best case, why don't you go ahead and continue with what you're going to propose? Because I want to give the people an opportunity. They took, they took their, you know, time out of their evenings to come here and to respond to something, you know. And I'm not real fond of a bait and switch either, so let's, all right, so go ahead, offer what, you know, okay, you've summarized what you've done, what was originally proposed. Now, what are you looking to change? Why don't you just hit those items, and then I'll bring the people up.
Thank you.
But that's fair to the board, is that reasonable? Okay.
Yes. So with this new proposal, it would require no setback variances on the southwest boundary, so we'll still have plenty of buffer and also no landscaping variances on the southwest. So there'll be a large buffer between the adjacent residents as well as a major screening using vinyl, the ones that they use in highways, so essentially, it would block all noise. The only variance that we would request is for the east, east and north on Shaner and 21. So the businesses across from the street are a good precedent for these setbacks because they essentially have no setbacks, and this will allow us to design this building without, you know, while keeping a good setback between the residents and our building with plenty of green space as well. And we've also heard concerns from the residents about the drive-through speaker.
So will you be encroaching into the east, into the right-of-way?
Pardon?
Are you going to be encroaching, you're proposing to encroach into the Shaner right-of-way?
Mitesh Gandhi, 49655 West Central Park, Shelby Township, 48317. I'm the engineer. We won't encroach into the right-of-way, but we will encroach into the 25-foot landscape buffer along the right-of-way on Shaner Road and 21.
Okay.
So, yeah, the drive-throughs will also have speaker technology. It's called active noise cancellation, so it will assist with the noise, and it won't be loud if it's quiet outside, so. And we have a study for that as well.
Yeah, Your Honor, what it is basically, the drive-through speaker system, it actually automatically, depending upon the ambient noise, it will adjust the volume. So, you know, for example, early hours, 5:00 a.m. is when we open, and at that time, ambient noise is low, the speaker volume will automatically adjust to the lower level so that the, any resident living in the neighborhood are not disturbed.
Yeah, so we've been just kind of listening to the community, and we're willing to keep this dialogue open to design the best solution for everybody. And here are some elevations and renderings of what the Tim Hortons would look like.
So you will still need the number, a tree, a tree variance?
With the new option, we wouldn't need a tree variance.
You'll have the 15, okay. Materials on the building, are you going to need, are you still going to do EPIS? And so you're not going to do a?
No brick, yeah. Because of, we're just following the Tim Horton prototype design.
Tim Hortons doesn't, isn't Shelby Township, but.
Right.
Your Honor, if there are any issues.
I'm not an honor, so don't.
We'll work with the.
As my colleagues will attest, there's nothing honorable about me. Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I had several comments, but since they've decided that they want, that they've agreed that they want to come back with another plan, I do have some questions, though. You've said that you've talked to the residents to get their feedback. Is that after you realized the first plan was going to go down, or is this before? Because it would seem like if you're going to build something, that you would get their input prior to coming to give us a plan, because I don't like, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing as far as coming to us and saying, we're going to do this, going to do this. I need to see it. But anyway, that aside, you didn't talk to the residents in the area prior to your first plan?
Your Honor, we did not.
Okay.
It was after the fact.
When did you purchase the site?
It was almost three, three and a half months ago.
You purchased it three and a half months ago?
Yes, we have been going through the, you know, plan with the Tim Hortons as well as the planning.
So you own it currently?
It's under contract.
Okay, so the, your purchase is contingent on the rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Can this property be developed as currently zoned office?
Not by us, sir.
No, 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 that's not the question. There was a site plan that was approved for this corner, I forget the year, but it was approved as an office for that corner previously. So the question is, can that be developed as zoned office?
I can't answer that question.
Your plan under this won't, obviously, but I think we can show that it could be developed as office.
Joe Maniachi can answer that question, but I won't be.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
There was a, one of the residents wrote in. Her concerns was relative to traffic, and I know that Shaner Road and 21 Mile Road is a very busy intersection already.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that you're going to have cameras to help with the traffic. How would the cam, on your second plan, how would the cameras improve the traffic flow on Shaner Road?
Okay, first of all, sir, we have state-of-the-art, we have four locations, two in Rochester Hill, two in Shelby Township, and we are one of the best operator with the speed of service, okay? Tim Horton's speed of service standard is 35-second average window time. We usually do, you know, 32, you know, even 30 seconds, okay, average window time. And so the purpose of the cameras is really to have a full visibility of the drive-through lane, so that the team working at the drive-through can see if there's any type of, you know, if a drive-through lane is spilling onto the road, and they push it very, very quickly. And we do have timers, you know, these timers, and matter of fact, all four of our locations, you can see real-time timers and not, you know, it's not required by Tim Horton. We do have it just to improve our operational efficiency.
I misunderstood you then. The cameras are to control on-site flow, not the traffic on Shaner Road.
That's correct, sir.
So traffic on Shaner Road is still going to be a problem.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, still going to be an issue.
Yes.
Now, your prototype that you've, you say it's a Tim Horton's prototype, okay? I'm not going to grant variances, but I can tell you that I've seen, if you do a Google search, you can find them. There's a lot more nicer-looking impressive buildings out there than ones EPIS with some siding thrown in for architectural look. I would encourage you, whatever you come back on a second plan, that you would do something to address the materials, the facade, because I'm not impressed with what I see. And I know based on what I've seen, you're able to do something better than that. So that would, I would strongly encourage you, upon coming back with your second plan, fix the variances and fix the facade, because I was ready to say no to this tonight.
Yes, sir.
I still may, I'm not sure where I stand on it, but I'm going to tell you, if you come back with a second plan, you need to come back with something that's going to convince us that it's a lot better than this, because I think this current plan has a lot of deficiencies that need to be addressed.
Okay, and that's why we're here, to, you know, seek the.
That's why we would be here talking about your plan if you had submitted it, but that's beside the point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just also to be clear, there are certain things that on screening we can make, under our site plan purview, can make some decisions on, but in terms of granting variances, there's another body, a zoning board of appeals, that actually, we may recommend, we may offer our opinion to them, but ultimately, there's an entirely different body that's also going to evaluate what you request. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the only public hearing. This body will hold on this request. Anyone who comments, it will be taken into account and put onto the record for township board evaluation. Ultimately, we're a recommending body, will turn over our recommendation to the township board, and they will make the decision. Now, if you were able to follow along with what we were kind of like talking amongst ourselves about here, they've made a, they've proposed, which you may or may not have seen at the township, with some pretty significant variances, they've, I think, come to realize that it was probably more than would be accepted. So now they're going to, they're going to, they want to come back with an alternative plan. We haven't seen it, so frankly, we're not going to act on something we haven't seen, even though they may have told us what it's going, you know, the highlights of what it's going to be. So if we postpone this, everyone will get another notice, and you'll have an opportunity to come and take a look at what the new submission is, and then offer comments on that. But you took time out of your days to be here, you get the general gist of what they're proposing. If you want to comment or offer a question, feel free to come up. I just would need your name and your address. And just don't yell at me. I get enough of that at home. Come on up, come on up.
I would like to speak.
What's that?
I'm Julia Wicker. I've lived in Shelby Town, oh, 8787 Willow Ray, Shelby, since 91, so a while. I work for Robbie, the 21 Mile location. He's correct about we can, you know, if we're impeding traffic, we can speed it up and get people out of the roadways, and we are really good with the community. We do work with the kids from Utica at my store, and I appreciate that we can give them an opportunity later in life, so that's just all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Can you sign in, please?
Oh.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, board members. My name is Prabjit Sidhu. I'm a resident of Shelby Township for two decades now. My address is 49669 Lake Bridge Drive, Shelby Township, 48315. Not knowing the full details, but knowing the business and Mr. Saney for almost decade and a half, whatever he has stated, I have seen him do all that work, so I kind of really appreciate him trying to develop the area. In addition to that, looking at the business, it brings life to that area. I know there are some concerns cited about traffic, but I don't believe they would add any high significance to the traffic as a problem, because if you look at 23 and Shaner intersection, which is decently developed, having a Tim Horton on 21 Mile, we definitely need one. That would be my inputs.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you could sign in, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Colleen Fast. I live at 46911 Shaner.
There you go. I don't want him yelling at me, so.
He can't hear anything, I know. He tried, he gave it his best shot.
Okay.
You got my address?
Uh, go ahead.
46911 Shaner, Shelby Township, Michigan.
Thank you.
I am the tri-level southeast of the petitioner's property. You're going to hear a lot about the traffic problems, which I know you're aware of. 21 and Shaner is ranked number five in the top 10 for traffic accidents in Shelby Township, or maybe it's Macomb County, I apologize. Christmas time, it's like a parking lot. If you'd have been there, we call it the raceway. Every summer, light clockwork, here come the souped-up cars, race cars, the men or the boys that are in them, and they drag strip from Hall Road to 22, down Shaner, and it's ungodly loud. People can't do things in their backyard without screaming at one another.
Can I get you just a little closer to the mic? I'm feeling for the guy back here leaning closer and closer and closer.
There you go.
There you go.
Anyhow, I've listened to this petitioner say what he offers in charities to his communities. He hasn't said what he's offered to us. All I heard was variances that he's requesting, I would assume he needs, to put this on this. As of right now, Leadwin-Frank's Lane, Ben Franklin, we don't have sidewalks. The cut-throughs off of Shainer onto Leadwin, Ben Franklin, excuse me, or down on Frank's Lane, they will come speeding around that corner so fast to try and beat that light in the traffic jam. I have about, on average, one accident a year in my front yard. Sorry. Not used to public speaking.
Yeah, me neither.
Yeah, I can tell. I've heard nothing from this petitioner that he's willing to give or willing to work with. He did not speak to me. He didn't speak to a lot of these neighbors. I don't know what he's talking about. He said he spoke to us. What were our concerns? He never mentioned that. He stated a few facts that probably at the last meeting and Mr. Maniachi's proposal. Anyhow, personally, I have one tree towards 21 Mile Road. I'm sure you know it, it's that decorative cherry tree. That tree is the only salvation I have from the lights from BB's. It's the only thing that obstructs when I come out of my shower, when I walk into my bedroom. That's it. What this man can do for me is put the equivalent trees up and make sure that my privacy is kept, kept intact. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. He's no concerns about this neighborhood. The aluminum, or what was it he wants on his facade to his building? Absolutely not. That doesn't conform. This doesn't conform. Within a three-mile areas, there are area, there are three Tim Hortons already built up. What do we need another one for? And the footprint of this Tim Horton's, in accordance with what he said, their stock photos, the franchise, is the smallest I've yet to see, just driving by researching. He's not in coherence with the franchise. So if you're not willing to work with your own company, why do you want us to believe you'll work with us? I have fences up against my property, front and side, shrubs, trees, a ditch that I really wish was gone, because it's a nuisance. But it stops those accidents coming on the side street into my yard. What's he going to do, keep us safe? And like I said, the traffic is crazy, you know that. We were back here, I think it was in '06, we addressed this issue, whoever was on the board then, most of us. And I was promised a study and something to be done to alleviate when they're dead-stopped through the intersection. I can't get out of my driveway, most of us can't. And they're not going to let you through. You're in such a hurry, I can't let that one car get in front of me. You gave, and you gave, and you gave, and worked with Maniachi, and I do believe you approved that, didn't you? On the office?
There was an office, right. But, you know, it was...
He had to comply with what you would want and their neighborhood. Never heard from him again. Maniachi, Mr. Maniachi has sent many people with proposed offers to two of the neighbors abutting this site. All ridiculous. I think my last offer was $40,000 for my lot. Now he's trying another avenue. They're not good neighbors. We don't want this. Every other fast food restaurant, not that there's many, up and down Shainer, up and down 21, they are all incorporated into a mall, where their ingress egress are at least two. They're at the furthest ends, there's time to cut in, put your turn signal on, cut in and get it. He's feet from the light. It's not going to work. It's going to interfere with traffic, there's going to be more accidents, people are going to get hurt. He can put his Tim Hortons, we have a lot of vacant properties and businesses in Shelby. Purchase one of those buildings. All the development is already there for you. It will not be friendly for this neighborhood and the well-being of this neighborhood. We're fine the way we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you sign in, please?
Good evening. My name is Larry Dennewith. I live at 46960 Frank's Lane, Shelby Township, 48315. I've got a little bit of information, may I?
Sure.
Got 33 signatures from the neighborhood. Question is, this zoning won't be changed. You talk about the traffic situation, everybody knows about the traffic situation, I don't want to bore you with that. But you look at the situation with all the other Tim Hortons, you look at the one at 21 in Van Dyke, that's a hazard right there, because the entrance is right there, coming off of Van Dyke on both ways, and it's a traffic situation there. A lot of close wrecks happened there already, too. So, I mean, how much privacy does that lady get by putting a Tim Horton's there? I mean, you got the, you're talking garbage can, you're talking garbage trucks, you're talking traffic all morning, when you're trying to sleep. And when it snows in the wintertime, you got the snow plow coming through there, dumping salt, plowing out the parking lot. I don't know if they looked at that situation. And then you got Shainer Road being plowed into that, because there's only one entrance off of Shainer Road. So now you got stuff, ice and snow packed up right there in that entrance, so that's going to be slowing down people getting in there. And I've seen them backed up on a lot of these Tim Hortons and all these restaurants, especially Tim Hortons, in the morning, they're lined up all the way around the building. You got diesel trucks coming in there, and I don't even know how they're going to get around there, but you got all the smoke and odor, lights and noise. And I just think that this just, we're trying to put, you're trying to put a quarter in the size of a dime, just doesn't work.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Ron Campbell. I live on 46631 Frank's Lane. And I've been here since 2001. And when 21 Mile was being resurfaced a couple of years ago, I requested to the supervisor, I asked if they could look at putting a deceleration lane coming into Frank's Lane because of the hazards of the traffic on Frank's, 21 and Frank's Lane. And they said that, you know, a traffic study would have to be done to do all that, and it was, you know, they didn't do all that. So has any traffic studies been done on this location? Because for me to drive south on Shainer, crossing 21, to turn into my subdivision on Leadwin is, frankly, it's dangerous just to make that turn, because there's no deceleration lane, there's no room for one. The person lives right there. And it's extremely dangerous with all the fire trucks and EMS units that are coming from the fire department down to all the residential senior care centers. It's almost like clockwork every morning that the fire trucks and EMS are going to these units because of some sort of an emergency. And it just doesn't seem feasible to have traffic coming into this location from the north and the south on that short distance. And it just, am I correct that there, the only entrance would be on Shainer Road?
That's what they're proposing.
Right. So just trying to get into Leadwin after crossing 21 is extremely, like I said, and coming the other direction, I don't even see how you could do it. It just, so my concern is about the traffic study. The fire department, I'm an ex-fireman, I used to be a fireman in the Air Force. And the accidents on that intersection, since they put the new traffic light in, have been horrendous also. So it's just a bad location. And like Larry said, at 21 in Van Dyke, in the morning, that intersection is horrible because of that. So I'm, and I just heard about this the other day, I never heard anything from anybody from this business, so I'm quite surprised. It would be better suited for an office.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Janice Dobis. I live at 46915 Frank's Lane. I moved into the neighborhood 2007. I lived at the corner of Frank's, I'm sorry, Leadwin and Terry then. So when we talk about the traffic, I've, now I live on, I live on Frank's Lane, it is a cut-through anyways, between construction on Shainer, construction on Hall, construction on 21. Anybody who wants to beat that light zips through from 21 over. If they want to cut through and miss the light going home, they come off of Shainer and they zip through. And they hit from Terry, they hit from Leadwin, they go to Frank's Lane, and they, or the other way. And they don't care what the speed limit is. And we don't have a Tim Horton's yet. So I'm worried about the kids that wait for the bus, I'm worried about the kids getting off the bus, people who are just, you know, getting their mail or taking their trash out, people, I mean, the people that cut through that are not in our neighborhood, they don't care. They will drive through at 40 miles an hour if it gets them to 21 or Shainer faster. So a traffic study would be great, especially if you could figure out how many people are coming through already. There is no egress or a deceleration lane, I didn't know if that was called that before, to absorb any extra traffic. In the evening, during rush hour, me trying to get out of Frank's Lane onto Shainer Road is nearly impossible, because the backlog of traffic then is so heavy. Put Tim Horton's there, now we've got it in the morning. We can't get out of the sub because of what the traffic is during that heavy period of time. So there's so many issues with this, and I'm not against, I love that this man is a huge community supporter. I work in Utica, I work at Beacon Tree. It's wonderful to hear how much he supports the community. But for this teeny, tiny little lot on the absolute corner of a crazy intersection that nobody really wants to go through and doesn't have a problem cutting through the sub, it's bad. It's really, really bad. And I heard about it through Larry on Sunday, or Saturday. That was the first I heard about it. I didn't get a letter, I didn't, nobody contacted or asked to talk to anybody in my particular neighborhood. And I'm the fourth, no, I'm the third house from 21 on Frank's Lane. And I didn't, I, no, there was no reach out, at least to the people in our immediate community from 21 Mile Road. There is the one already at Van Dyke. I don't know why we need one a mile and a half away from one that already exists. So those are my concerns, is a big business that takes that kind of volume in such a small space when people already abuse the subdivision for a cut-through, excuse me. And it's so close to the one we already have. If this was, if this was a lawyer's firm, if this was a doctor's office, if they put in even a little market, it wouldn't have the traffic flow that we all know that Tim Horton's is going to bring in, any kind of coffee shop, chain coffee shop or chain fast food would bring in. I mean, even a gas station, I would be here saying, "Please don't put it in." Because the flow just cannot be handled at 21 and Shainer. And that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Jayge Mandian. I live at 49609 Lake Bridge Drive, Shelby Township. I've been living there for the past 18 years. And I live, I live there and I currently work in Auburn Hills, so I travel by there every morning and come by, come back in the evening as well. So I go through that traffic that the folks have been talking about. So yes, the study needs to be done, but what I'm here is, to speak about is, that I've known Ravinder Sani for the last 20-plus years. And if he says that he's going to look into, ensure that the privacy is protected, I vouch for that. And I believe there is a need for Tim Horton's, because it's not, there is one another mile and a half away, but Tim Horton's does their own marketing. They then, they will not put a Tim Horton's if there is no need, then there is no volume besides it. So that's why I just wanted to share my feedback there.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Bitu Chehill, 54049 Huntington Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan. I can fully respect the folks that live in that area. I do not live in that area, so from a traffic concern standpoint. But the only thing I can assure you is, I've known Ravi for about two years now, as both of our girls play on the soccer team. And one thing I can assure you, in knowing Ravinder and the family, is he is going to do everything in his power that he's got control over to make sure he makes this the best situation for everybody involved. There's going to be certain things, obviously, from a traffic standpoint that may or may not be in his control, but anything he can control, whether it's a new plan, an updated plan, concerns he's got to put in, additional finances he's got to put in, I can assure you from what I know of him and Anita, they're going to do everything in their power to take care of that situation and address the concerns that they got control over.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Dean Stachek. I live at 13444 Leadwin, that's Shelby Township, 48315. I live directly behind the proposed Tim Horton's kitty corner from Colleen's house, right next door to Joe's house. Joe's directly across from her, I'm next to him. This is a nightmare, a traffic nightmare. His child, the children that live down the street, they won't be safe. The area is bad, it's heavily trafficked. Putting a Tim Horton's in, we all know, you wouldn't put in a coffee shop if you weren't going to make money. And at five bucks a cup, you got to sell a lot of cups. That's a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Gordon. Thanks for allowing me to speak to you. My name's Al Mayatki, 49308 Mackinac Court, Shelby Township, Michigan. I've lived in township for 30-plus years. And I'm going to speak on the personal note here. I've known Ravi and Anita for about six and a half years. The story all started when my wife pulled into the 21 Mile and Van Dyke store and saw a sign as she pulled in, "No hiring." And she approached the window to pay for her purchase. Ravi was there, and she says, "Are you the owner?" And he says, "Yes, I am." And she says, "Do you offer special needs people an opportunity for employment?" And he says, "Yes, I do." So my wife came home and told my son and I, so he told Greg, "Get dressed up, go over there and fill out an application and get an interview." Greg was given the opportunity to interview and was given a job. Okay, he started off doing stock and janitorial work, because he's had past experiences doing those type of things. But as he grew on the job, he gained confidence, his self-esteem grew, and he went to Ravi and Anita and says, "I'd like an opportunity to be a baker." Okay? Now, the skill set from janitorial and stocking to baker is quite different. But he took it on, they were patient, he was persistent, and he accomplished that particular feat, and has been baking at Tim Horton's. been baking at Tim Hortons for four years. He's worked at all four of their stores. He takes great pride in the work he does because the showcases are work of art, if you go look at him. He receives lots of compliments. So, I would like to see that Tim Hortons built, understanding traffic issues because Ravi gives people with special needs an opportunity. And what those people need are more opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Please sign in, sir.
Sir, can you sign in, please?
Good evening. I'm both chairman and board. My name is Gregory Amiaki, 49308 Mackinac Court, Shelby Township. I've been resident 30-plus years. Thank you to my dad, Alan. I've been with Ravi and Anita for six and a half years. I'm a special needs disabled person. They have taken on a lot of challenges over my life, 61 years. They gave me a special chance, and I grew with them. I'm still with them. You know, I support disadvantaged, special needs. I've worked with Rochester Community School, Ucic Community Schools, special need programs, been friends with them, job coaches, mentored a lot of them. And I'm still doing what I'm doing. Hasn't been easy, but I'm still learning. I would support this building because they give a lot of pride in taking advantage of community relations and other needs. You know, I strongly feel very privileged. I would support that too. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? No. You get one, you get one shot at it, sorry. We'll probably be back here in a month or two, so.
Good evening. My name's Manvinder Talwar. I've, I'm here to support Ravi. You know, I'm, I'm sitting here, I've been listening, you know, I've been listening to the traffic concerns. But what I want to express to everyone is that if there's anyone that can build this and make it work, it's Ravi. Okay? I've known Ravi for 15 years. My kids grew up with Ravi. My child worked there. My wife worked at one of the Tim Hortons. He's a great guy. Okay? If anybody can make this work, and if everybody wants to have an input in this, Ravi's here to listen. And if, if he can do it, he will certainly try to do his best. And I can vouch for that. You know, I've known the guy for a long time. Manvinder Talwar, 53953 Southern Court, Shelby Township.
Good. Thank you. So, I'm going to concede the fact that, that Ravi's a great guy and a great, a great, no, again, and familiar because he's been before this board before, and he's, he's got businesses here, and he's operated well, you know? And that means something to a degree. But we somewhat have to take all mistake personalities out, you know? And it's, does it fit in the location? And that's what, that's ultimately what we need to, to focus on is, you know, does it work or does it not work? Okay. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Mike Ferranti. I live at 13443 Leadwin. My property is behind Colleen's and across the street from Dean's. Colleen's and my property touched that property. Two out of the three that touched that property, we never heard from anybody. They said that they talked to the people. It seems like the people that are directly right next door to you touching your property, you should reach out to. They want to take away that easement. You gave away the easement for a medical building, which is a lot less traffic. If anything, it should be greater than that, I would think, between the noise, the medical traffic and whatever. We already know what the regular traffic's going to be like. And then parking, I don't know how much parking you're going to have if you have a restaurant there, too. Forty employees for the people, is there going to be enough parking on that corner? So, and you already know all about the traffic. So, and he, there's nothing against you as a business owner at all. He seems like he's very good for the community. But sometimes that's not a good fit. And that area's not a good fit, that's all.
All right. Can you sign in, sir, please? Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone else?
Hello. Jim Garden, 54873 Starlight Drive, Shelby Township. I've known Ravi for about two years now. My daughter plays soccer with his daughter. And yes, he is a great guy. But I can wholeheartedly say that he will do everything in his power to make it work. If it doesn't work, I get it. The traffic is awful. I'm not going to deny that. But I would see that, I could see that they would literally do everything in his power to manipulate the building in a way that suits the community.
And I guess, and we're going to see if he's able to do that or not, so.
Yeah. Number two, right?
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, you've been referenced five times, so you got to say something.
Good evening. Joe Kostovic. I live at 46765 Shaner Road, just south of Colleen, corner of Leadwin and Shaner. I work from home, have been for years now. And I see that traffic every single day. My window, my office window at home faces Shaner. 4:30 comes around, traffic is backed up all the way from the traffic light that cuts into towards Home Depot, all the way to my house. And then adding all the traffic that piles in, coming south from, down south in Shaner. Take my kids to school at 26 and Shaner every single morning. Takes me like 10 minutes to get out of my street almost, to go left, to go north on Shaner. I've been clipped because people don't pay attention. I've had my kids playing my driveway. And like, I'm not using any names, but certain type of people that just like to cut through subdivisions have ended up in a ditch right across the street from my driveway in front of my kids. I've been clipped walking my dog down the street that has no sidewalk. And every time there's an accident at the 21 and Shaner intersection, when they close it up, they find way down my street, right by my driveway, right by my kids. Other kids that are trying to play in the, on the street, people walking their pets. It's not safe. You know, office building is one thing. This, what they're proposing with one in and out, 20 feet, virtually 20 feet south of the, the traffic light, not going to happen. When I drive home from my, after picking up my kids, I, you're scared to pull in the street because there's no deceleration lane. So, what they're proposing, they're going to manage the traffic? They're not. It's impossible. I, you can come over to my house, spend a day there during the week, see for yourself, see what happens there. Not to mention all the drag racing, the semi trucks, the fire trucks, ambulances attending to the McLaren care home or whatever it is across the street from you on the other side of Shaner, the one down right across the Plaza, Planet Fitness. It's, it's, it's not going to, you know, I'm sure this guy's a nice, great for the community. It's all great, nice and dandy. But that doesn't matter in this case. It's going to cause more accidents. Look at the, just look at the, the numbers of the incidents that have happened at that intersection of the last three years alone. And saying that they got the feedback from the community, I live like 50 feet away from it. Yeah. You can smile what you want, but you never talk to anybody. But thank you for your time.
Okay. Could you sign in, sir?
Excuse me.
Okay. Tell you what, I think we've got it, I think we had a pretty good feel for everything, so. Go ahead.
My name is Daryl Kaiser. I'm a resident of Shelby Township at 2071 Carrier Court.
If you tell me what a great job Ravi, guy.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
No, I'm kidding.
I was just going to say that. I was not, I was going to come up here to give a testimony, but now I don't need to do that. But now, after listening to all this, and I, I hear the concerns from a traffic and these other concerns regarding safety, but it's come to my conclusion from listening to this, that whether you put a Tim Hortons here or not, will have no change in the traffic. These people that are experiencing these issues have traffic concerns and safety issues that are regardless of whether a Tim Hortons is there or an office building. It's not going to change. It's going to get, continue to get worse whether this business is there or not. So, you have to make the decision to what, what business you're going to put there, whether it's a Tim Hortons, an office, or nothing. But we obviously support Ravi and Anita to, to have the Tim Hortons. But that is not the issue. The issue of this traffic and the safety that's been brought to the attention tonight has nothing to do with what business goes there. And these people are experiencing issues that are not going to change regardless of whether a Tim Hortons there or an office building. So, I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At the right time. Hang on. To the planner for comments.
Thank you, Chairman. So, based on the master plan, master plan compatibility, the future land use plan designates this as commercial. So, hence the support for a commercial zoning. But along with this is the special land use requirements. And what triggers this is the drive-through. If you have a commercial property, abutting a residential property, then, and drive-through is proposed, then that's where the special land use requirement comes into play. The second issue is the site plans must adhere to the standards in section 4.27 for fast food restaurants and also section 4.26 because there's an outdoor dining area proposed along the north side of the building. The proposed facade materials, those are up to the planning commission. That does not go in front of the zoning board of appeals. Just, that's just a clarification. It's up to the planning commission to accept the materials they are proposing or request something else. The three variances, as they explained, are for major one screening, trash receptacle, and loading and unloading area encroaches into the setback. So, these are the things that need to be addressed. Again, like I said, the master plan supports the rezoning. It is designated for that. And typically, commercial districts are at major crossroads. As far as the traffic study that, that was brought up at this meeting, traffic studies are required on a case-by-case basis. In this case, we have 21 Mile Road that is already, in my opinion, already expanded. We just redid that road. Shaner Road is already a five-lane road at that intersection. I'm not sure if we, if there is a traffic study that is generated, what more we could do. In my opinion, we also have one point of ingress and egress. I think that would circulate traffic better on the site instead of having two points of ingress and egress. That office building originally that was proposed had two points of ingress and egress, one on 21 Mile and also one on Shaner Road. So, I think for that type of business, that may have worked well. For something like this, I think what they have proposed as far as ingress and egress is appropriate. But as far as that, that is concerned, I, you know, up to the board to decide on what they would like to move.
Okay. Thank you. Last chairman that spoke mentioned that, that the traffic isn't going to change significantly. And I think, you know, I kind of heard it a little bit differently. Yeah, that the volume of cars going, the traffic going by Shaner, you know, I think the purpose of this Tim Hortons likely is just to capitalize the people that that's their path and they're going to go in to do it. The bigger issue and concern, I think, and I think, is it, maybe, and if I'm wrong, the people will yell at me, but is the safety concern. And that's in very short windows of time, you're going to put people in and out of Shaner Road, you know, in the morning from whatever, seven to nine, or six to 10, you know, some short period of time, then maybe some lunch period of time, and then sometime after, you know? And then what does that do to a road that we've all driven down Shaner, you know, going to the mess that is, you know, that mall, all area in there, going to, going to cut the cost, cut through to Costco and the Home Depot and all that stuff. And it's, it's crazy no matter what time. How do you make a left hand? You know, this, these are things that, again, likely we're going to, you know, so as you're, as you're thinking through your process to come back to convince at least this one vote here, those are the things that I'm going to want to think of or figure out. Okay, so if someone's turning left, how do you, I don't know how possible it's possible to turn left onto Shaner Road from that, from, from the Tim Hortons. And someone will, and even if it's 10 or 20%, that creates issues, and it creates safety issues and concerns. And the fact that you didn't talk to the folks that frankly have the biggest stake in this because they're abutting, you know, not an office building that, you know, it's nine to five, and it's spattered through the day, and there's no, you know, there are no, there's no baking, there's no coffee, there's no cooking, there's no, you know, there are no garbage that potentially, you know, could create an issue. And they hadn't been spoken to. I mean, I think their concerns need to be, you know, you need to make them comfortable that you can possibly screen this, that, 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 that the impact on them is limited. And then the bigger for the community, broader to the folks that live in the area, that somehow, that, you know, putting those cars onto Shaner is not going to create just another potential risk, you know, for the, for the people that have to live there and drive there. So, questioner. Any other questions were, you know, I mean, really, we're talking, we're talking about traffic, and there's a little bit on parking.
Couple of questions. So, first of all, Mr. Chairman and the member of the planning board, we heard each and every resident very loud and clear. Okay? So, one of the questions that was brought up by the, you know, resident living on the, you know, south side, that cherry, black cherry tree, that will stay. Okay? In the proposed plan. And then secondly, I heard also comments about the smallest footprint. Okay? So, we are actually, so, our businesses, our, our traffic, actually, our guest base is 85% drive-through and 15% in, in restaurant dining. And so, this footprint is actually optimized footprint. And, you know, post-COVID, it has changed significantly. Now, the drive-through traffic is 90% versus 10%. So, in order to address the need for the community, we still have dining room. There are, our smallest footprint is 800 square feet, drive-through only. Okay? So, this is optimized footprint that, that we have. And then thirdly, having one ingress and egress. Okay? So, we saw that issue firsthand at 21 Van Dyke where the traffic from both, you know, sides from Van Dyke as well as from 21 trying to, you know, get into the drive-through and therefore causing a gridlock. And when we looked at the, you know, initial plan, and, you know, I agree with the, you know, planner's assessment as well, that having one ingress and outgress, you know, egress helps with the traffic flow much, much better. Okay? And then, you know, we will be screening, major screening on the south and west side to ensure the residence privacy is protected. You know, if we have to put eight feet fence, we're open to that. Okay? So, you know, provided the township guidelines permit us to do, do that. I believe the ordinance is six feet, right? Am I correct, Julie? So, we will, we will be screening that area, you know, heavily with the fence as well as dance skipping. As far as the trash pickup, you know, our dumpster are fully enclosed and we do twice a week pickup. And that is, you know, and, you know, dumpster doors are closed. And matter of fact, we get assessed by the Tim Hortons, you know, random audits, unannounced audit where if the dumpster door, and the health department also, you know, ensures that those dumpster door, doors are kept closed. So, these are some of the concerns I heard. And as far as the traffic, we are morning day part business and majority of our traffic is typically the hours of, you know, 6 o'clock till 10:30, 11. Okay? Lunch, we do not. And the snack is, you know, probably, I'm going to say 10%, but 72, 72, 80% of our traffic is morning day part. And we typically get about 3% to 4% of the traffic that goes on the Shaner. So, if it's 22,000 vehicles and 2% or 3% of that, would that be, you know, roughly 500 to 600 vehicle over 24-hour period. Okay? I hope this addresses some of the concern, concern, then we will try to address pretty much all the, you know, feedbacks that we heard. Now, we are good corporate citizens, and I assure each and every member and the residents living in the community.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's in doubt. I'm pretty sure I can speak for my colleagues that no one's in doubt. You've been, you've been a good, you've been a good, a good steward within the township and the businesses that you operate. This is a challenging location, and, and we just need to, we need, we need to see if it's feasible or not. And that's, that's, that's our, you know, that's the task that we're given with. So, it's, yeah, this isn't about personal, this isn't that you could, you can't execute at a high level. It's, you know, can you execute at a high level at that location? And that's what we need to, that's what the new plan needs to come back to us to convince us and to convince the neighbor. Well, I mean, ultimately, we're going to make a decision, but we're, you know, we're also going to listen to the folks that live in the area. So, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Basis of our motion this evening must be on the practicality of the rezoning request and the effects on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land. Do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning? Is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? We can recommend approval. We could disapprove the request, or we could table it to evaluate it further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, I move to postpone conditional rezoning in site plan special land use twenty-three dash twenty-five Revender Siani, ANST eight seven Real Estate LLC, four six nine four seven Shana Road, parcel number twenty-three dash zero seven dash thirty-five dash two two seven dash zero two two, located on the southwest corner of twenty-one mile road in Shana. Conditional rezoning, oh one professional office to C two linear retail business. Proposed Tim Hortons Cafe and Bake Shop with drive-through in order to give the applicant an opportunity to address the planning commission, department engineer, and residents' comments.
Moved by Snyder, support by Meredith. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. If you've signed in, you'll get a notice. If you live within three hundred, four hundred, what's the?
Well, it would be up to you. We already did the three hundred foot notification. Typically, when items of such are postponed, we notify the residents that came up and spoke.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I always said, yeah.
Or, yeah, or if they'd like to come, if they didn't speak, sign in.
That's where I was going. So, yeah, so sign in the sheet. And then to the petitioner, if at the next meeting, our budding neighbors come and tell me that no one came to talk to them, you don't have to listen to them, but just hear them. Oh, you have to listen to them. You don't have to do, you know, but, you know, I would, that would reflect negatively on me if, you know, you didn't consider their opinions, you know, because those would be questions I'll be asking. All right, thank you. So if anyone, if you didn't speak and you want to make sure you get notice, sign on the, sign on the sheet here. Okay, next item is, did I call the role? I did, yes. Michele Lucherco for Villa at Preston Creek. See, now, your fatal mistake is you didn't bring Julie Donuts, and she puts you, you know, at the end of the agenda. So, you know, Dick Wright would know. Dick Wright, Dick Wright knew. All right, name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Planning Commission members. My name is Mario Izzy. I'm with MJC Companies. We want to thank you for the opportunity tonight. Address is four six six zero zero Romeo Plank, suite number five, Macomb Township.
What do you want, what do you need, Mario?
Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight asking for a two-year extension to our site plan for site condo development that we have on Hayes Road. I'm sure I'm not the only developer that's been in front of this planning commission asking for site plan extensions. With the complexity of the new codes that are required, stormwater treatment, sanitary sewer, water main, the additional hoops that we have to jump through to get these drawings prepared for a lot of the state agencies, it's just become more difficult. I've been in this industry for thirty years. I've never seen it this, this bad. And I'm not here to complain. I'm just saying this is what we're dealing with. So we're asking for more time, specifically two years, so that we don't have to come back in front of you in a year from now. I believe our property is in good standing with the community. Our taxes are paid in full. We do have a farmer that does farm part of the property. I don't believe there's any issues with us as a landowner. I think the last time was before this commission, a year ago, we talked about the sizable investment we made with the property adjacent to the south to avoid a potential problem extending utilities on Hayes Road to this particular project that we're here before you tonight. So we tried to end run that potential issue on Hayes Road with a deep sanitary sewer and water main extension. And the people that I worked for bought a piece of property just adjacent right off of twenty-five mile road to avoid that problem. So I, I'm not asking for kudos, I'm just saying, it just adds another layer of complexity to the project that's already approved. We have not brought you the site plan for the project off of twenty-five mile road. There's multiple parcels there. We will probably come before you with a small eight to ten unit proposal for one of the smaller parcels. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions, and we appreciate your time this evening. Thank you so much.
I will also concede that your employer is a fine citizen of Shelby Township and the county.
Thank you for that.
Deserve many accolades, but I have no issue. Does anyone have any issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
No. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore.
I move to extend rezoning petition number three dash twenty and site plan number twenty dash ten, PUD number three, Mario Izzy, MJC Land Investments LLC, Villas at Preston Creek, eighty-five single-family detached condominiums, five five nine five five Hayes Road, parcel number twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero one dash four twenty-six dash zero zero one and twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero one dash four twenty-six dash zero zero four, twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero one dash four zero one dash zero zero one and twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero one two hundred dash zero zero six, located north of twenty-five mile road west of Hayes Road for two years expiring on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, support by Commissioner Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing non-Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Next item is the Meyer Express Gas Station at twenty-four and Hayes.
Thank you, Chairman. We just received a notice of public hearing that was provided to the township for Meyer Express Gas, Gas Station at twenty-four and Hayes. Their public hearing is going to be October third, two thousand twenty-three. If there's any other information, we can receive and file this, or if the board would like any more information, I can request that from Macomb Township.
So we can direct the planner to go and represent the planning commission's position?
Whatever you choose.
That may not be fair. Okay, my, all jokes aside, is there a motion?
Move to receive and file.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have business from the floor if you all want to say something. No? Yes? Were you here to say something, or?
We just have a question. We got this one.
Come on up, come on up, come on up. Nothing's free. I got a name and address.
I'm Joe Dimmer from two five six six, Shaw Shelby Township, Michigan, four eight three one seven. We just got these notices in the mail about the Stone Ridge North Phase Two, the multifamily.
When was that?
Residential. I'll take complete fault for that. What happened was, we had mailed out the notices, and the day after we mailed out the notices, we had the applicant call us and ask us to remove that from the agenda because they have some internal workings that they need to, legalities that they need to figure out before they came to the planning commission.
That's probably something we should have started off with.
Well, the agenda, the agenda, when, when the agenda was posted, that item was removed from the, from the agenda. And the people that were calling in, we notified them that they, that was removed off the, that was not on the agenda.
I completely understand. If we want to find out.
This is how the sausage is made, so.
We know very little about this whole Phase Two. If we want to find out more about it, can we just go down?
Yeah, or come, come talk to the planning department. They would.
During the business week?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we live right along there, and we don't know if we're going to lose all of our trees along the road and all of that.
So they're, they will be submitting revised site plans. So the plans that they recently submitted will not be reviewed by the board. They have to make some revisions, but you will get notified again when they come back to the planning commission.
Better put your phone number on that card and give it to the staff, and they'll call you.
On this card?
Yeah, on that card, so. And then they'll call you when, when they come in, and you come down and see them.
Where, with you?
With Julie. Okay, Mr. Snyder, it's you.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Is there support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.